Good evening, everyone. I am acting deputy mayor and I would like to call to order our committee of the whole meeting for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Are there any additions or deletions to add to the agenda? Right, I'd like to make have a motion made that the agenda for the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented. Thank you, councillor Schwanard. Any discussion? All in favor? Passed. Alright, we had the minutes distributed to us. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes? Okay, hearing that, I'd like to have a motion that the minutes of the June twenty second, two thousand and twenty one Committee of the Whole Meeting be adopted as presented. Thank you councillor Bevan. Any discussion? All in favor? Passed. Alright, we have no delegations, no report from staff, executive office, none. Infrastructure and planning, we have a land use bylaw amendment, draft bylaw number twenty-two sixty. Our CIO Beveridge, are you going to take this?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilkinson. Actually, Mandy Chan, our municipal intern, is going to have this one off. Thank you.
Hey, Mandy, welcome.
Thank you councillor. Just one second, let me just share my screen first. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, good. Okay. Good evening councils. Tonight I've prepared a presentations on the land use bylaw textual amendments by law number two-two-six-zero. Oops. As an overview, I will start by providing background information on the amendments. Then I would jump into the administration suggestions along with the amendment review, followed by the town's land use districts, statistics and map indicating where the associates' districts located in the town. And then at the very end, we will open up to any question that council may have for administration. Recently, administration received an application applying for an amendments to land use bylaw number two-zero-seven. To um to add recycling depots to the C-one retail commercial districts to facilitate development of a bottle depot at an existing building. Currently, after administration reviewed our land use bylaw, recycling depots or another similar uses is not listed as a permitted or discretionary use in any of the districts. Therefore, administration proposed several land use districts in the land use bylaw where recycling depots could be listed as a use. As in amendments overview, there are three components to the amendments. The first one is to add the definitions of recycling depots to section six definitions. The second one is to add recycling depots related use development standards to section eighty-seven. Lastly, is to add recycling depot as a discretionary use in two commercial districts and a light industrial unserviced districts to allow the development authority to condition any approvals given the potential impact on the neighboring land. Lastly, is to propose recycling depot as a permitted use in light industrial service districts and the heavy industrial districts, as the proposed use is suitable for the general purpose of these districts outlined in the land use bylaw. For the definition, administration proposed the amendments to read as recycling depots means a development consisting of a principal building used for the enclosed slash interior buying, collecting, sorting, packaging and temporary storage of recycling material, which does not include construction or demolition material. Typical uses includes recycling, I'm sorry, recycling facility, bottle depot and compost facility. For the recycling depot related use development standard amendments to read as follows, outlined as seven items on the slide. I'm not going to go over all these standards, however, please do note that the main goal here of the standard is to maintain public well-being. The table listed here as the land use districts that will be adding recycling depot to as to the left here is discretionary uses and to the right here is permitted uses. The land use bylaw sections to each of the land use districts listed on the slide is attached to the agenda package for councils to review as additional and reference material. To get a better understanding of how this amendment actually affects the town, administration generally generated this table as kind of an additional source of the informations for council. So in total, four hundred and forty-two properties will be affected by the proposed amendments. The majority will be C-two service commercial land use district with one hundred and seventy-three properties. The least influence will be the M-one B light industrial unservice land use district. So this slide here is just kind of just to create like a visual aid to kind of see where is actually located the land use district that the four hundred and forty-two that are actually located within the town boundaries. In conclusion, the proposed amendments intends to facilitate diverse and strong economic opportunity, potentially increase business opportunity and variety in several districts, while maintaining public well-being and also its public health. Thank you for your attention and we are open to any questions that council may have for administration.
Any questions? Yes, councillor Schwanard.
Hi, thank you for your report. Through to Mandy, I'm only questioning is why is it necessary to add the recycling depot to use to all of these because we're not going to have a overrun? And I do appreciate the fact, so if someone's in a bottle depot, recycling, et cetera, why we wouldn't just, if someone wants to just do it. So is there a main reason why we would add discretionary to the total list of all these properties or, you know, we're not going to have fifty bottle depots in town is what I'm questioning?
Through the chairs to councillor Sernard, the reason why we want to make sure that we add all this land use to it is that we are actually make sure that there's actually opportunities out there. So when there's opportunities comes, it does not always have to come back to council to review and get approval that way. So it's kind of for economic wise, it's kind of, it's just easier for potential opportunities out there too.
Any other questions councillors? Yes councillor Curry?
Through the chair to Ms Chan. And sorry, this is a, I'm not, you might know the answer. I'm hoping you do. In other land use bylaws in other communities, is it common to have recycling depot throughout all these different areas? Did you look into that at all?
Through the chairs to councillor Curry, I did do some research on other municipalities and then they do kind of have it separate into, they usually locate it in commercial districts or industrial districts. And then in that case, and then it kind of separated into permitted use and discretionary use. So that's why I kind of I based on some of the examples in other municipality and then have the suggestions. And I don't know if I answered your question, but feel free to get our planning managers, Carrie, to kind of add on if she have any additions was common.
No, that was perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mandy. Of course, it's an excellent presentation. I do have questions. Originally, I sort of understood you're adding this recycled depot, so it it covers our current bottle depot now. Is that true? Alright, then now this will be leaving opportunities for other businesses to come in and set up opposition to our bottle depot, our recycling depot, et cetera.
Yes, that's correct councillor.
Alright, even though we already fund our recycling depot or have before we entered into contract with, okay. Alright, thank you for that clarification. Yes councillor Schwanard? You're mute.
I think Carrie had a had a question in front of me. If I'm not mistaken, she was waving her hand.
Oh, sorry, I can't see. Oh, I can see you over there. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jean.
Sorry, I just wanted to add, it is our bottle depot that was the applicant on this land use amendment.
Right. Okay. No other questions?
No, I'll take mine now because I didn't know if she can carry. I guess my only concern is because like where it says recycling depot is vague. So being in a different industry, that means if I could recycle metal wood, like not only bottled depots, but with that said, if someone applied for a permit because we had problems before, someone's doing scrap steel recycling in the wrong area of town. So they would still have to fill out, even though they'd still fill out their development permit and still have to get approval. So if they were doing something, because where I heard compost, you don't want compost anymore because it's very smelly. So they'd still have to do the regular permitting to get the approval to got it, even though it's zoned for it, there's still other approvals in place, correct?
Yes, through the chair to councillor Sernard.
Okay, each each one will require its own permit. Okay councillor Byer, sorry, I see your hand now.
Thanks, through the chair to Ms Chan and administration. Thanks for bringing this forward. If there's another bottle depot that wanted to open, I think it's best to have it just listed under wherever it is best used instead of having it come back to council individually. I sometimes I think that looks like favoritism and I would prefer not to be put in that situation. So I appreciate this format instead. And I also liked all the rules that broke down within the proposed bylaw twenty-two sixty, how everything that's added and and that there's there's rules to to govern that, that as far as the height and the nuisance and the odors and the rules around that as well. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes councillor Curry?
I don't have question, but I just would like to say I am to planning, I am support in this change and adding in the language. I think this is the goal that we've been looking towards with our land use bylaw is just making our areas more accessible to business owners wanting to come in and trying to limit that. And that is what this is doing. And it is a situation where I think it just makes us easier to do business without having to add more red tape by coming back to council again. And I think it does allow, as councillor Byer said, I think it does a great job of ensuring that all the concerns are hit throughout the entire bylaw in that process. So there are a lot of steps before you would ever get this. So I think this is our step forward. So I really appreciate and thank you for bringing it forward to us.
Okay, no other questions then. Thank you, Mandy. And again, an extensive amount of work and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Alright, our next item is Public Works roof replacement. We got an extensive report on that. Would you be handling that as CIO or are you turning it over to someone else?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilkinson. Guy Latour will be speaking to this item as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair to council, thank you for your time. The report is in front of you. I'm gonna do a very quick summary, walk you through it, and then I'll open it up for questions. So originally, last year, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Public Works roof repair based on two preliminary quotes we got. As we started to dig into things, there was lots of uncertainty around those quotes and the actual condition of the roof. So to do our due diligence for the tendering process and make sure we, we're going to install the proper roof and have all the the right information, we went through the process of engaging a consultant and we hired Garland Canada to inspect the roof, create the documents and specifications and project manage the roof installation. With with them, we will get a twenty-year guarantee as our as our consultant in contract or oversight on our contract. They did an inspection. We found multiple issues as suspected. The roof is at its end of its lifespan. The big real issues is we have two large areas on our roof that we have penetration or moisture, sorry, moisture penetration and it's in the roof. And the original quotes would have been just to basically roof over top of those wet areas and then we would already have the moisture underneath everything. So once we got that inspection, we wanted to have proper numbers to come back to you. So we did a pre-selection process for contractors and selected six contract roofing contractors. And then we got proper specifications tendered out on the recommendations from Garland and we received six quotes back. As you might have read already in the inspection report, Garland had indicated they initially thought the cost would be in the six hundred thousand dollar range. We got quotes back and Garland does recommend that we go with the lowest bidder, which is West Point Roofing. And so underneath them, we have three options to go with. Option number one would be to replace the roof right away, the whole roof. And with that, with the basic insulation. There is, as in many industries right now, material issues getting that insulation. So option number two would be the higher end insulation and the second option, if we couldn't get the the primary cheaper insulation, which is still good insulation that you can build your roof with, but it's the basic quality and there's a shortage of it right now. And then option three is spreading out those costs possibly over two years. And all those quotes are higher than our original two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. So there's a deficit that we're coming back to council and asking you to consider what option you would like and if we would want to move forward with the extra cost of replacing the roof. That is the main information. I'm open to questions.
Councillor, yes councillor Schwanard?
Okay, I have a two-part question through to Guy. Option one, you said delay, how much delay? Are they thinking six months, a year, three months? Would we, if it was delayed, could we get it in this season?
All those quotes are in the anticipation that we try to do it this season. But we, until we issue a contract, we don't know if they can source the the material right at this moment, so.
Okay, then if I can do a follow-up with the second part of my question then. So option two, the insulation they're putting in, is that have a higher R rating, you know, like it's more money, it's just because it's different material or is it better insulation?
It's better insulation councillor Schwanard.
Okay, then yeah, I guess we'll have to figure out the funding. Thank you for answering my questions.
Councillor Bevan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, through the chair here. I did read this over here and that. And I see then there that you also said that we could do part of it now and part of it later and that too and that eh? I didn't like that idea. I'd like to see us do it all in one shot here. My experience with roofing and that is that you start doing parts here and parts here and you go to make them together, most of the time they leak again and then it's going to be a big, big dollar factor to us and that eh? So I would rather us go with all in one shot here. And if we can do the option one, let's see what type of timeframe it is to get everything and that. If not, then I guess the option two is a way to go with do it hundred percent, complete the whole building all in one shot.
Through the chair to councillor Bevan. With option two, we absolutely have the ability to obtain the materials to do it this year completely. We fully hope that even with option one, all our, all the, all the contractors that bid that had guaranteed work to be able to get done by end of October, worst case scenario.
Okay, second question to the chair. To administration, where would we pull this from our reserves? What reserves?
I'll defer that to Alan.
Yeah, through the chair to councillor Bevan. We did do some research onto what a reserve accounts would look like with finance. We do have one reserve that would probably fit the portfolio and that is our current reserve, which is in the revenue sharing. There's about one point five million in that reserve. Out of all the reserves we look, that was probably the most plausible one to use. And there like to say, there is about one point five sitting in that reserve today.
You're happy with that councillor Bevan? Alright councillor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to, I think it's Mr Latour. I'm just wondering, did we have our municipal energy coordinator Brendan Rehm look at this project as well, since I'm not sure if there's any way to incorporate some energy conservations as we're going through this process that would make sense?
Through the chair to councillor Byer, we did have some initial discussions with Brendan, but short of removing two units that are not being used on the roof, our units that are on the roof are not looking like we're in a position to replace any HVAC or anything at this point. So the key, the key focus is on repairing the roof at this point.
Yes councillor Byer, go ahead.
Thanks. One more question. I'm just wondering also through the chair to Mr Latour. It mentioned somewhere in this package that maintenance, ongoing maintenance would be required and it kind of touched on that there were a few pieces of maintenance that it looked like somewhere attempts were made in the past and then others like things that needed to be done, I don't know, in the future or something. Do we have a, is there a, I'm not a roofer, I'm just wondering with any of the companies that would do that, is there some type of maintenance package or or I guess timeline that they would suggest certain maintenance aspects be done, just so we can maybe avoid leaks in the future over the next thirty years?
Through the chair to councillor Byer, in the past, we have not had a proactive inspection program. We are currently building one for this year's budget and we are putting in the current upcoming budget for this year. A three, a three-year rotational inspection on all our main roofs, which is about eleven properties that have roofs. And also on that note, we do need to do a proper full inspection on the civic center roof also next year, because it's also leaking and get proper information back on its condition for we can assess that and move forward too. But we are moving multiple items into a proactive maintenance schedule in the new budget.
Thank you.
Yes councillor Curry?
Through the chair, she's on my other screen. Ms Bitner, you know I'm calling on you, you should know that by now. Ms Bitner, I would like finances thoughts on, my my natural gut is to do it in one year and to pull out of those shares or show, pull out of the reserve because I find anytime we split a project, it ends up being more than we anticipated. But I would like to hear from finance on their thoughts on how that works in our budget and the comfort level of pulling it out of those, that reserve.
Through the chair to councillor Curry. I think you've nailed it on the head. I think we would be best to do this in in one shot, even looking at at splitting it. When I'm looking at that and looking at our budgets and looking at our reserves and how we would fund that, we'd end up probably funding both years from that same reserve anyway. So it wouldn't really be any any great saving to do it over two. And as you say, that second one, when they come back, had prices gone up, you know, is it is it more difficult to to complete it into into lots like that? So from the financial side, I have no no worries about going ahead and doing it in one and in one go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well Guy, oh sorry, go ahead councillor Byer.
Thanks, through the chair to administration. So I also would prefer to just do it in one year. I think that just makes sense. Do we have to pick? One moment. Sorry, do we have to choose which option we want right now? I I I would likely be in favor of option one, but if that means we can't get materials right away, then I I don't want to delay it at all or push it into winter or make it difficult to to complete if the weather turns sour early. And but but I'm certainly willing to go to option two if that makes more sense.
Guy, you have an answer?
Yeah, through the chair to council, I think there's two philosophies moving forward for you to consider. We can go with option two, just to cover our bases cost-wise, which we're recommending. If they have the materials to go with the cheaper option, we can go that way and save money. Or you or council could direct us to go with the 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 better insulation and goes directly to that level and and ensure that we get the work done right away.
Yes councillor Bevan?
Yeah, I would rather go with the option two and that's. That building has been around since eighty-seven or whatever it is. It's going to be around another twenty years or more, as long as the town is down there and that. And I can't see them growing and moving anyplace else. And when you look at the difference between option one and option two, it's about thirty-two thousand dollars, which isn't a lot. And that and we get a better product and it'll be, it'll be better for all the workers down there and stuff like that too. So I'm not afraid to go with option two.
CIO Beveridge?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Just to to clarify, so we'll be bringing this back for the July twentieth council meeting in which we'll have the opportunity to choose an option. So we will put forward the recommendation and we'll have the alternative ready as well. So if we decide to to move to the other option, we'll have have all of that information ready.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Well, Guy, I'd just like to say thank you for getting this study done. You know, ten thousand dollars sounds like a lot to me. When I looked through that, I thought it was well worth it. And I am very, very happy that you are starting to do a proactive thing on maintenance, because to me, I just looked at some of it and I thought gee, maintenance would have really helped out on this. So I'm really glad if we can do that. Out of curiosity, how much would it be for a new building of that size? Any idea?
Through the chair to councillor Wilkinson, I am not going to make that guess. I'm not going to go there. Not going to do it.
It's worth, it's worth doing the roof then. We're not throwing good money after bad.
Yeah, yeah, it would be way more than what the roof replacement is.
Like over the years. Okay, I thank you for that. And I definitely, I know we'll be coming to the choice, but if number two is environmentally better with a better rating, I think then really to be responsible, that would be a good choice for us. And thank you much for the report. Yes councillor Bevan?
You want me to give you an estimate like I did on the multiplex way back when? Who's going to come in that was not far off?
Okay, come on, go for it. Okay, yes, Mr Latour?
Through the chair to council, I'll just end on one note. I'm absolutely positive if we, if we go with the higher insulation, we'll be able to to get some energy efficiencies that we'll be able to put towards our energy efficiency program. I'm positive there'll be some, some stuff that we can put towards reducing our carbon load and I'll consult with Brendan and we might be able to just bring that back for information at the next meeting for you might know.
Okay. Oh, yes. Oh, that's just a thumbs up Crystal. Okay, no other questions? Alright, thank you. We're all pleased with the report. So thank you very much for that. Okay, we're on to corporate service, business assistance through the CFWY program. Would that be you or Ms Bitner?
That would be me.
Yeah, you're always the money man. Thank you.
Right, so in front of you is a the report that we brought forward about the Community Futures Business Assistance Programs. As you can see, we we went back and thought through the, you know, the things that we have done for business and As you can see, we, we went back and thought through the, you know, the things that we have done for business and obviously one of those things, apart from the, the budget cuts and, and payment delays, et cetera, was the creation of the loan program. At our last committee meeting, there was some discussion through council with maybe moving some of that to a grant program. And so administration went back and discussed sort of different, three different options that we could bring back to you tonight. One is, is the grant program initiative that was brought up at the last committee meeting, moving about half of that money over to, to give grants to businesses that would apply for them. I might go through the whole thing because I know you've, that it's, it's there in your program. The second option was an amendment to the current loan program. So at the moment, the loan program has, is interest-free for 180 days. They then start paying their interest on, on that. And we could look at extending that interest-free period even out to, to 365 days, which is quite generous for the loan, but that was the option B that we came up with is actually just making that loan program maybe a little bit more extending that interest-free period. And option C is obviously to continue with, with, with it as we have now is status quo. So we just put those items forward, those options forward for council's discussion.
Any questions to Ms. Bitner on this? Yes, Councilor Byer?
Thanks. Through the chair to Ms. Bitner. Thanks for bringing this forward after last week. So I like, I like option A and B. I know there was some kind of general talk about maybe cutting it in half and is that still feasible to do it like that, to still offer an additional interest grace period if, if there's businesses that, you know, might do better with that or, or if Nancy would just suggest not to make any changes to that?
Through, through the chair to Councilor Byer. And obviously we, we've listed it there as an option for, for the grant program. I think with, with our discussions, we discussed it a lot at the administration level. You know, there, there's lots of things to look at whether, you know, is $5,000 actually going to be of, of any use to, to a business? We can only do a certain number of businesses. So there is some limitations within that, within that grant program. Also, as you said, listed there, you know, if, if there were to be different amounts of the grant program, how many businesses would then be able to, to, to apply for those? So it's, it's, it is an option, as, as I say, we have listed that option. So it is, it is something that, that we can definitely look into if, if we get that direction.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Curry.
Um, thank you, administration for pulling this together. I did notice in the beginning part, no mention of, we also did $100 utility credit. So just noticed that in there because that was a substantial amount of money. So just, just one thing to know, because I, I, you of course, Ms. Bitner would know more than me, but that I know was in the couple hundred thousand dollar range, was it not?
Through, through the chair, the Councilor Curry, it was, but we did the $100 on residential only.
Yeah.
This year, we have done it over.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just making sure people know what we did because that was a substantial amount of money. I guess like my, like I do feel like there's some question of like what, you know, like people are hemming and hawing. My, my biggest concern like about making a decision about this is we put that money into that grant or into that loan program over a year ago. So it has been a substantial amount of tax money that was meant to benefit businesses that isn't, that it's, it's not being utilized. So I would like us to do something. I, I have had multiple businesses tell me they're not looking for loans and are looking for grants and are seeking out free money, to be honest, because they, they can't afford any more debt load. So I, I don't know. I, I'm struggling. I'm struggling because we have money that is sitting and I'm not comfortable with that. So I, a little bit like Counselor Byer, am leaning towards, I would like to do one and two. I would like to do one and two where if it is that people need the tax-free or sorry, the interest-free, that option is still there and they can do that. If they're looking for a smaller amount, then they can do that. But I also don't know for rushing this and it's bad timing because it's the summertime. And it just is so, so I guess I'm struggling. That didn't help much. Sorry, admin. I didn't help much. But what I am uncomfortable with is taxpayers' money sitting to help benefit taxpayers. That isn't being utilized. We know that. We know that. So I do think something needs to change and we need to make a change because I'm just not comfortable with that aspect of it.
Anybody else? Okay, I've talked to business owners as well that were sort of astounded that we would be giving a grant of taxpayers' money to people, quite astounded. So there's all sides to it. Councilor Byer?
Thanks, through the chair to administration. I went after seeing the numbers, the $5,000 and knowing that would only go to 30 businesses. And I'm guessing there's probably a lot more than 30 businesses that would qualify for this loan. Although $5,000 may not go a lot to some businesses, it could save the life of others. I, I'm a little hesitant that I, I would want, I would want to help more businesses. So I don't, maybe I'm leaning towards that 3,000, at least you can help out a few more. I'm not sure, you know, if, if we hear a lot of good feedback or there's some like more, I guess we can always make adjustments later to the other portion of it. I also don't want the money to sit. This is here to help businesses and there's some that, you know, that like they're, some aren't going to make it and some already haven't made it. So if we can prevent some from going over the edge, then I think that's the right thing to do. And we got, we got the most grant from the, from the government. So in my mind, that kind of balances that out that it's what it's intended for, to help out. So I don't know, I'm leaning towards the 3,000 right now so we can help out more businesses. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, any new discussion? Yes, CAO Beverage.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilkinson. Through to council. So I think when we look at this situation that we're faced with, we are, we're sitting with, with potential for more changes or more adjustments in the fall. It's one of those situations where we don't particularly know for sure what's going to happen. And while I appreciate, of course, that it has been sitting for a year and, and knowing that the grant has been underutilized in presenting and really thinking about what these options that we have set out. You know, when we look at all of the assistance that we have provided to our, our business community as well as our residents, it, it's one of those challenges where whether we, we you know, allow for a grant. So, you know, as we know, finances are an issue and will continue to be an issue for this municipality, for all municipalities. And we're heading into, to budget where things are going to be exceptionally tight. So from the perspective of looking at the financial future, it's just one of those aspects that I wanted to bring to light is as far as a grant, of course, we, you know, we, the money is gone. And in, you know, that, yes, it will help a certain amount of businesses alone, then we do get it back and we're able to replenish other, you know, to do, required to do other activities as well. And then, or it can be revisited. So just, you know, this was carefully analyzed as far as what could be possible for this opportunity to help benefit the, the business community. So this isn't an easy one for sure. So I don't know if I've added any value whatsoever, but hopefully to know that we have evaluated this to extensively and, and have, you know, discussed with, with Community Futures as well. I met with the chamber today to just to get a sense of the business community of what, what the constraints were and, and if this, what would be most beneficial and so just making sure that there was awareness about the grant, about the loan. And to that end, there, there was an awareness about the loan. So I'm wondering if possibly if we, you know, reinvest, you know, and educate both this opportunity. It might be a possible, you know, knowing that it's been a while and let's refresh, but that's just an option.
Hey, thank you very much for your input. I've got Counselor Curry then Counselor Schenard.
Thank you, CAO Beverage. I do agree. I think it would be helpful to do some re-advertising. I think if we're leaning towards that loan thing, an easy thing is to do to change the interest rate on that. That's an easy, it's not a huge change that can see if it happens. It allows to see. I will say to that conversation though, there was a ton of advertising and there was a, so I do, there's ownership, there is ownership on people that if you're looking. So I do get a little bit frustrated sometimes because I know how much advertising was done on both ends. But so I do, I think if that is, if we are looking at sticking with the loan, I think it's easy to change those interests sooner than later. And then when we go to reevaluate if it's actually picked up, if that's, if it is that it's that people didn't know and it's the interest, that's something we'll know fairly in the next six months. So I just don't want to sit with no change and expect something's getting different is going to happen with nothing happening. And then that, you know, six months down the road, having to reevaluate and nothing's changed, but we also didn't do anything. So we don't know what, what was the problem if we don't actually do anything. And, and I'm sorry, I'm going back to this because when people are saying giving free money to the businesses, once again, I would have liked to have had the money on that $100 and that $50. Because we did give to the residents free money in the tune of 300 plus thousand dollars. So when, when people are saying that, you know, we, we did that, that was a choice this council did. So that did happen. So it's not, that's not something unusual. And it was done to help residents, but not the businesses at that time. And that's why we put this money away for the businesses. So just making that point again.
Thank you, Counselor Schenard.
Hi, just like I'm considering this whole thing. I don't like grants. I do like our CAO, I always make the mistake is a comment, we don't have to be in a hurry to spend it. I agree. Next year's budgeting coming in, it's probably going to be harder hit. So keeping money in the bank, wherever it is, don't matter where it is, it's good to keep. I would be more in favor of giving out interest-free loans because my feeling is most of these businesses, $3,000, $4,000 will do nothing for them. I'd be more in favor if, you know, if it worked. Say here's an interest-free loan, you don't have to start paying back for a year or 24 months would be similar to where we give people tax reliefs. That may help businesses because I agree, the comments in the room, I don't want any more, any more payments. So it would be a, a lot bigger helping hand to say, you know, you can maybe give someone 25 or $30,000 to float them for six months or 12 months. Cause most of the businesses now are very relieved that restrictions are off, but they're stating it's going to take me 18 to 24 months before I can start balancing the budget, making money. Now their heads are above water. So I would be more in favor of extending our loan thing, giving these people and you know, instead of handing a grant, say, okay, for the next 24 months, you make zero payments. It is a loan. We do have equity. And since it's taxpayers' money, even if we up the ante to save our businesses, I'd be more in favor of a loan because a grant's gone. A loan, other they survive or they don't. And the struggle has just started for most of the business. The ones that held on to this date. Now the next question is, can I survive the next 24 months?
Yes, I think we have big questions there as to how our businesses are going to progress. Administration, do you have enough information to bring this forward into our council meeting?
Deputy Mayor Wilkinson, I do believe, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in on, on Sarah if she was going to speak, my apologies. I do believe so. I think the, the two options then potentially will put, bring forward for the July 20th meeting, which would be the loan option and also the grant option is what I'm hearing everyone say. Is that correct?
Is that correct? Thumbs up if you think it's all right. It's all right. Yeah, hair, cheeks, thumbs up, we're good. Okay.
Councilor Curry. Do I have a question?
Yes. Go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, man, you're going to kill me. I'll just get a talk with my coffee mug here. Just a thought, if we're trying to get loans and one of the reasons why the federal loans were so successful and why people went for them first was there was some relief on your repayment. So don't know how come it, but instead of doing a grant, if it's like you're actually doing a large loan where it is, then if you pay back certain amount or, you know, maybe that's too crazy of an idea, but that a little bit of a relief. But you're still getting that loan back.
Yeah, I think that's, Counselor Schenard had just mentioned that, like 24 month relief or whatever.
No, that's like interest. I'm saying money back. I'm saying you don't pay back your entire loan. Like that's, like, that's what all the federal loans did. That's why all the federal loans went so fast because you didn't have to pay back the whole loan. Like you got a small relief. Sorry, just a thought.
Okay, thanks for that. I think if we're finished, we'll go on to community and protective services. We have the June report from FCSS and from community development. Who would be doing that? All right, it looks like it is Ms. Byer. Go ahead, Tanya.
Good evening, council. It's really exciting to be here and providing an update for you when we can actually, you know, do our programming and, and host events as we're used to doing. So pretty excited about that. So further to our last meeting, the FCSS Advisory Committee meeting that was, we did make a decision to move it into the community of the whole meeting. So this is our first one, I guess, of the quarterly nature. So in addition to providing the FCSS update, I'm also going to add the Recreation Arts and Culture update along with this. There's, you know, really, just like the FCSS Advisory Committee and Cal, you know, no voting, no big decisions to be made. It's just really going to be a pretty broad update. Please stop me at any time, ask questions. I'm willing to take comments, questions at any time. And I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully it all goes well. I'm not going to go line by line through it. You guys have already received the, the updates or the, the presentation, but I will, you know, just touch base on a few things and give some updates. Because it is June, we have had a few things happen since then. So here goes.
Sounds good. And if you have questions, but Tanya, please just ask them because I can't see you when the screen shared. So just feel free.
Okay, everyone can see my screen. We're good to go. So focusing on FCSS first, we, we did have some successful programming in June with, with the restrictions lifting. Dadda Day, Father's Day themed kits, we did have 11 families take part, the babysitting course, we were so excited to be able to do that safely in person. And we had eight participants take that, which was great. Another Lego challenge, we had two story walks. We've also rolled out some grant funding in our community. And so Reflections Meals on Wheels, we've provided them with $3,600 and that's to help them with the transportation to pick up meals and also just the organization and administration of that program. With that's an in district community learning society, we awarded them $2,080 and that is for September to December where they'll be building on the new, it's a, it's an immigration group for women and new Canadians. So that's been really exciting. They started it last year, but it was a bit tricky under the, the COVID circumstances. So they're really excited to start getting together in, in person. So we also have the West Yellowhead Pregnancy Care Center where they were awarded 6,000 in grand dollars. And this amount, what they'll be providing is grief support and, and classes for individuals. And it, it's not in a group setting. It is individual, one-on-one. And just with the research we've done, and even with it running last year, they had some really wonderful outcomes for the individuals. So we did decide to fund that again this year. Also, you know, when we think of grief, I think we often think of, you know, deaths and, and that as loss. But through COVID, there's been a lot of other situations that have included grief and loss, right? So we do think that it's a really important program or, or thing to be offering in our community at this time. We also have a couple of applications. The, the Leap Center has, we're, we're actually kind of working with them on a partnership where they can provide some drop-in programming and that sort of thing. And they, they provide more programming for children with varying abilities. So we're, we're still working on that one. And Reflections Nutrition and, and And Reflection Nutrition and and Drop In Program, we we also just recently gave them some funding as well to keep that program going. And that's one that we've really been funding year after year. And I think that you're all fairly aware of the Reflections Program there and the great work they do. Ally has created, whoops, sorry, a twenty twenty annual report and she's, it's just gone to printing. And so once that's ready, we'll we'll provide counsel with some of those if you want to distribute them, share them. I think that's just part of, you know, province wide FCSS, we really need to work on upping our profile. It's it's a very, you know, quiet, humble program that not everyone knows, you know, the great outcomes that that come from it. So we are just trying to do our part, I guess, to really up that profile in the province. Seniors Week in June, it, you know, we we could only do so much. We certainly, you know, with the restrictions that were still in place and we were still being very cautious. And so we were able to have the drive through breakfast. Ally was quite creative in in figuring out how to get that done. So for those of you who who weren't able to attend or or see what had gone on there, she had contracted the Fresh Vine to come and they provided hot pancake breakfast for over two hundred people that drove through and they were really, really quite thrilled, I guess. And what what was really nice, we did do some outcomes reporting to Athena, did a lot of collection as people drove through. And we we found that there was a lot of individuals that this was the first seniors event that they had attended. So it it was really nice, although it was different, it did attract, you know, I guess, some new and different individuals. So sometimes when you do things differently, you get results that you don't expect, which is which was nice, too. So also virtual presentations, including future planning, meditation, brain health and chair yoga took place. As you can expect with with seniors doing things virtually, it it's not ideal, right? We we like to get them out. We like to get them socializing and connecting with others and and just working the electronics and stuff isn't always the easiest or even having the technology to do it. So we do have quite a few savvy savvy seniors, though, and we we did our best to get them virtual programming. Transportation update and Counselor Bevan, if you want to jump in on this at all, please do. We, Counselor Bevan and I both attended the ESTS AGM in June. And, you know, the 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 previous board really needs to be commended. They served over a decade. They were so committed to particularly our seniors, but also those with disabilities. They they also did some work for early childhood and getting individuals to daycare and that sort of thing. So, you know, they they really did an amazing job of building a very, very strong nonprofit society. And, you know, they, I think one of the most important things you can do as a group is to pass that torch and and especially when it's in good standing. And it really was like they were so responsible in making sure that they had a healthy reserve and, you know, they had enough money to, you know, maintain continuity of services, even though there was some really tricky things with COVID and not being able to fundraise. And so they they really did a good job of that. And you know, they've they've passed it on to a very passionate group of volunteers that I'm really excited about. You know, there, it's a very diverse group that that has a really, they each have kind of unique skill sets, but all really strong in certain areas. So we have, you know, the diversity being represented on that board include like the early childhood group, core daycare, they have a representative there. Sherry from Scope, we also have someone from, well, Christie from the Friendship Center has joined as well. She's a one of the directors and going to help hopefully with some grant writing and and that sort of thing. And Sung from AHS, he's the new president and he he's occupational therapist and he he is so passionate. He was also part of our medically at risk driver group when we were trying to find solutions for all residents really in Edson, but he's so passionate about helping those who are shut in, isolated, you know, especially those with difficulty getting out of their house at all. And so, you know, he's just going to be such a strong advocate for all groups that that we are likely to be targeting with this type of service. And then also Mr. Gamoka has joined and he's very strong in board governance. So I'm not sure if I I've missed any of the new additions, but I'm sure you can see my enthusiasm with with the strength of this new board. And, you know, that they'll be able to hit the ground running because the the previous board left it in such a good place. So really excited to see where that's headed. And, you know, once they get their feet under them, you know, it will be up to us as a group to to talk about the future of, you know, how the town of Edson is contracting with them and that sort of thing because, you know, there there is financial obligation that we do have with them. So any questions on that one before I move on?
I'd just like to make a comment, Tanya.
Please do.
Yeah, I commend the board that was on before. I did sit there as a council member and that. And they they done a as best a job as they could do over all those years without really getting a lot of help from anybody here. Our new board has had a meeting and that. And I did field a lot of calls after we had our new board in place about what the seniors was going to look like. Are they still going to get their bus? You know, they're going to do this. And I did assure them that the seniors was number one on the on the list and that moving down to, you know, mentally challenged or whatever and stuff like this and that. And I also recommended that we have one spokesperson for our board here. So they don't have to go to five or six people here and that. We will have one spokesperson that will direct all the questions to, and he will get back to them in a timely fashion and that. And that way, all the information will be current and that and it will come from one person that and the board was happy to do that. And we had a meeting and it was very, very good. Dr. Sung had everybody take a responsibility on what to do with the new board here from getting memberships, et cetera, and that, which was lacking before and stuff like this. So everybody's looking forward to doing it. I think, you know, it's going to grow. Seniors are very happy now and they are getting their bus service and people are just very happy with the new board.
Tanya, I would just like to thank you very much for recognizing the former board as well. Like those four or five individuals raised all that money through the trivia night, getting all those donations and everything. It was just a Herculean job, really. And I hope the new board is prepared to do all that fundraising because it really, really was quite something. And thank you for recognizing them.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Wilkinson, absolutely. I mean, it it wouldn't be what it is today without that group and they put in long hours, a lot of blood, sweat and tears. So, no, we we couldn't be more thankful for the work they've done. Okay, I'll move on here. So public education and community events, as you know, and I I know a lot of you are fairly active following our group on Facebook and, you know, just seeing some of the some of the different groups and whatnot that are being offered. A lot of this was still, you know, being done through Zoom and whatnot. And, you know, we're we're really shifting, I guess, now into doing things in person. So we're quite excited about that. And so while coming up in July, you've seen some of these things happen already, but FCSS was a part of Canada Day and they were there. You know, collecting outcomes and doing a photo booth and handing out cupcakes and, you know, just spreading a bit of cheer, I guess. And we have more presentations coming up. The Community Engagement Action Team is going to be working on another skate park luau. We're really excited to bring that back because we weren't able to do it last year. And I think the youth have really missed it. So I'm definitely going to up our engagement there. A Grief Tree with Best, and that's taking place also at the library. And then Connection Camp, and and those are actually youth camps that are running right now in person. And there we're running them out of the the Kinsman Building and in Kinsman Park, doing as much outdoors as we possibly can just, you know, when the weather's nice and we can get outside, just, you know, trying to minimize risk. You know, even though restrictions have lifted, we're still, you know, being careful. Now I'll move into the community development, which is more so focused on the recreation, art and culture work that Deanna and Krista are doing. There are some things that are partnered as well with FCSS, but, you know, for the most part, it's the work of those ladies. And so, you know, youth council, I think you're all, I saw that you all celebrated them this week, which is, you know, kind of nice to see. Really impressive, I guess, that these groups were able to get in their volunteering and whatnot and still find really meaningful ways to engage with our community, whether, you know, picking up garbage in masks or wearing Eddie and, you know, they they were still as engaged as they possibly could be under the circumstances. So really proud of this program. It's it's been really good for the youth and and I think also really good for us. We were learning a lot through their eyes. And Krista partnered up with with the county for June being Recreation Month and they just created this this whole calendar of activities that people could get out and explore and do around Edson and Yellowhead County. Of course, following all the restrictions, which was tricky, but they did a great job. And the story walks on the town trails. We we've had two stories up so far. We we have experienced a bit of vandalism, but you know, I I think a big part too that that I want to explain throughout COVID is that one of the largest goals I think our team had was to keep bringing hope to the community. And, you know, it's our belief that whether it be in the newspaper, on social media, or things they can see, touch and feel in the trails and in the parks, that if you inundate them with the good stuff, it makes the difficult things, you know, a little bit easier, or people tend to not focus so much on them and get so bogged down. So I really have to commend my team for being really creative and just finding ways to reach out, finding ways to connect and get the community to connect or residents to connect with our community and still, you know, remain positive and and, you know, just move forward as best we could, working together. So, you know, despite the vandalism, it would be very easy to say, you know, we quit, we're taking it down, you know, people aren't respecting things. But that would hurt the whole community, you know, for for the actions of maybe one individual. Same thing, we we had some rocks go missing, you know, beautifully painted rocks on the scavenger hunt. But at the end of the day, you know, it it was, we had so many people take part in those activities and, yeah, a few rocks went missing and but when you look at the community outcome, you know, we wouldn't do it any other way and we're not going to quit doing these things. So Eddie's Big Run, you can see a couple of cuties that took part in it here. You know, seventy five participants, which which in our minds isn't too bad. I mean, it's certainly not what what Chris is used to having really big big events with breakfast and the whole nine yards. But, you know, it, we did have seventy five participants. They were engaged. They were excited to do it. And you know, they did it safely. And, you know, next year, fingers crossed, it's going to be bigger and better than it's ever been. We also have a new committee working with with Eddie's Big Run this year and and that went really well. It's too bad they didn't get to experience, you know, the full scope of Eddie's Big Run. But I guess they're being eased into it. So again, Krista had a mix of online and in person. We have to give her a lot of credit for rolling with the punches because she would have something planned outside. You know, such as rolling the spin bikes outside and doing it safely out there. And then all of a sudden it was like, nope, no adult. So then it had to go virtual and, you know, so she really had to roll with the punches and and keep changing things up to to, I guess, keep up with the restrictions. My team, really, they did it with a smile. They, you know, as frustrating as it could be at times, we just kind of shrugged and said, okay, well, what do we do now? How do how do we do this next? And I can't really, you know, speak enough about the good work that they did. Nature play, we were able to resume this month. So again, that's having families outside and doing nature play, learning through play. But I will tell you, one of the things that that I'm most excited about is the leader assist program that has finally launched. And it it was really quite timely. It launched when our restrictions lifted. And we we've already had five individuals that have signed up for it. And I, we've had a couple others that have been inquiring as well. And Krista also, you may have seen this online or or through email out through interagency groups and whatnot. She's just kind of done up a pamphlet where you can, there's, you know, the three different grant streams that you can access for different activities in our community. So we were able to share that and and the groups are sharing that with residents and, you know, where it's been a tough year for everyone. And, you know, we really hope that that families will take advantage of these programs because, you know, we want our kids and our youth and and our adults to all be healthy. And if this is what they need to be able to take part in our community events, then we really hope they take advantage of it. There's been a few little hiccups on ActiveNet just with registration and whatnot, but Kristin Rose are working through those really well. And you know, where it's, we knew that there would be a few little glitches on the backends and whatnot with the system, but you know, nothing that they can handle and we're we're getting it all figured out. So Canoe, so that's the new Culture and Arts Network, or I should say the revitalized one because it did use to exist and and Deanna is just working to kind of bring it back. Just getting the arts community to, you know, work more in unison together and and find some ways that they can, you know, work together, host events together and just really pool, share their resources and, you know, working together, doing better things for for themselves and for the community. The Community Mural Mosaic, we're very excited that five hundred tiles have gone out. They have not all come back in. This week, this week is when everyone should be turning their tiles into the museum. It was really nice that the museum, because they did have their doors open as a tourist group. So it was really nice that people could go there and pick up their tiles and and come and go. Deanna also did a couple paint nights in the park just to, I guess, engage more individuals. And she got rid of a lot of kits last week and and did some painting right at the park, which was good. So we're we're super excited to get those back and, you know, send them into the artist that's going to put it together and and make our piece of art for us. The Edson Diversity and Inclusion Video Series, I know that some of you have seen this and shared this already on Facebook. We we've had two videos so far and Deanna's on holidays right now. So we just took a little break and and we'll be back at it this week. And, you know, please, if if you guys know anyone that would be interested in, you know, being featured in in one of our videos, please send their information on or have them contact Deanna or myself. Because we're we're just really wanting to celebrate the uniqueness and and the diversity of our community. So by all means, if you guys know someone or maybe if one of you would like to be featured, please let us know.
So Tanya, that would be people with special needs children as well, right? In a family.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, Deputy Mayor. We, obviously in this, we don't discriminate. Anyone, you know, it doesn't have to be a crazy, unique type situation, right? I I feel like, you know, it could be ancestry of any type or age or, you know, based on so many different things. So we're absolutely open to anyone that would like to, you know, just come and share their story with us. Yeah, and Deanna partnered again with the Galloway Museum and did Maytee Culture Campfire and TP Raising. That was on June nineteenth. And then our Canada Day Decorating Contest, I mean, for for those that participated, you know, they did a wonderful job and we had given out some some prizes and whatnot to the winners. We we didn't have as much uptake this year, but I think it's understandable. I think the COVID fatigue is kind of there. And, you know, with the, I guess, state of affairs in our in our country in general, I think it, you know, it it was just a little bit heavy for people. So we didn't have as much participation. I guess we can't necessarily say why or speculate on that, but it wasn't what we'd hoped for. But, you know, the the ones that did participate, we were really happy they did. And there was some some really neat decorating that took place. So it says coming up in July, but the mountain biking courses, we had seventy three individuals take part in those mountain bike courses over the past week. And it was incredible. If you've seen the videos, the pictures, Sweet Riders came out from, they're they're quite a ways away in Southern Alberta. And they came out with their instructors and everyone had nothing but absolute rave reviews. They, Krista's already collected a lot of feedback. Everybody is wanting them back, possibly even in September for another camp. So definitely, definitely something we're going to be doing again. It was a huge hit. It was a huge hit and, you know, it it just gets people out into the into the new bike park. It builds awareness it. But on top of that, I think more importantly, it's people knowing how to go out there and safely use the park that's there and learning some new skills and whatnot. So, yeah, that would that was something we would definitely do again. Youth Interagency back up and running, really excited about that. Counselor Curry, if you want to jump in, by all means. But we're back to like group trips and we can go whitewater rafting. We can take kids in a bus and go to Edmonton and, you know, so really excited to have that program back. Counselor Curry, anything you want to add?
Uh, nope. I think other than from the sounds of it, last I heard, we are almost full. So it tells you, and looking at the list, we have, we we have new kids. A lot of our kids aged out on us through, they didn't age out, they just get too cool for us. But, yeah, and grew afoot, but we're pretty excited. It is that we are, numbers look like we will be super busy and kids are happy to back doing things. So we're excited.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, the Participation Community Better Initiative, this is something that Krista is actually planning with her rec interagency group. And so she has several different organizations, whether they're for profit, nonprofit. Everybody is basically creating an event or something where you can try all these different events in our community, whether it be, you know, yoga or dance or spin class or or what have you. So again, it's just a really nice community development initiative where she's, you know, these groups are working together. And they're really finding new synergies about like how we can share space. And maybe we both don't have to rent a place. Maybe, you know, with our groups, we don't need it at the same time of the day and we can share. And so it's really just about trying to, you know, find those synergies and have them working together and and finding ways that they can, you know, just ensure that their their business or nonprofit can be more sustainable. And the Canada Day Video Special, hopefully you all took part in that. Mayor Zahara had a, you know, nice intro to that and a little little fun trying to find Eddie. And Canada Day Celebration in the Park, while I think, you know, our team did the best they could and also in partnership with the museum again. It was, it was underwhelming for us, right? Like we're used to doing it big. It's so, we're we're really excited for August to come when when we can do things upright. And with with Wapme Day, we'll be doing it upright and there'll be a lot of different things going on that day. So we're still in the planning and like solidifying, you know, contracts and booking vendors and that sort of thing. But once we have that all figured out, we'll we'll for sure give you more details on that. And Art in the Park coming July twenty-fifth, Deanna is planning just, you know, a basic Art in the Park with entertainment and food, drugs and that sort of thing. And that concludes my presentation. I'm sorry, I know it was fairly long-winded. I'll stop sharing here. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, through the chair, Tanya. Thank you very much. Tanya was very good. And what you've guys done over the year here with this COVID and everything else. I'm getting a lot of questions asked right now is you have the Art in the Park is coming back on July twenty-fifth. People are asking if we're ever going to have a pig roast again. We had six, seven, eight hundred people come out to the pig roast. We had tourists stopping in. And it ran for I don't know how many years that we volunteered for it to cut it up. And they especially love seeing the whole pig, just not the ham sort of deal on that. A lot of people like to see that come back. That's one way we can get a lot of people out in our community to come out. They just enjoyed it, you know, and and like I have a story there that when we were cutting up the pig and that, there was a little girl, she was afraid of the pig's head. Her mom told her, you know, don't go up there, don't do this. She left her alone about two seconds later. A little girl walks up to the head and sticks her two fingers in his nostril. She was not afraid at all. And and there's stuff like that, people just laughed and took pictures. It was a great way. We got the Pioneer Cabin involved to make chili, different groups involved. It's it's just a nice way to do it. And we even had seniors cry there because it's been a long time since here to a pig roast, way back in the farming days and stuff like that. So maybe there's something we can do. If you need a hand, I'm willing to help you again and I'll put it on or do whatever I can to to help you guys out. I'd like to see us do something for sure. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for your input. Anybody else? Any other questions for Tanya? Yes, Counselor Curry?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you so much to your team. The resiliency of your department during COVID has been phenomenal. I have had so many comments from people outside, inside Edson of how fantastic it is. But even outside of Edson, sharing things on social media, I have so many people comment saying how cool things are. I had company come when we were allowed. I was legal and did the the scavenger hunt for the rocks and just amazing. And even the flowing with that, when the rocks went missing, I almost was excited for the missing signs. Like, it was just creative. So many things you guys have done all across, all across the board this last year. Like, it has just been really fantastic to see that community development can happen and it can change. And I I just think it's really, really been amazing to watch. And I thank your team for being so flexible and creative. Yeah, the community is lucky to have you guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I'd certainly be ditto to Jackie there. I honestly believe that you have helped Edson just enormously throughout the COVID time. There's always been something on the go, something to look forward to. And as a senior, I guess I can speak for other seniors too. They had people coming, bringing the food, maybe the seniors little bag. I think it has really kept them from really suffering from loneliness. So I think that that was a real asset. And certainly for the kids, there's always something going. It seems if you look at a calendar, you're putting something on. So thank you for that. And then again, on the provincial level, on behalf of FCSS there, thank you for going to Martin Long's office with me. I really appreciated that you had the answers. I think you impressed him a great deal. So thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Tanya. Really appreciate that.
Thanks for your time, everyone. Good night.
And no information items or sundry? Do we have any questions from the media or from any people watching?
We have two members of the media in attendance tonight, and Adrian does have a question. One moment.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Adrian.
Good evening. I actually, I do have two questions. The first one is with regards to the Public Works roof. I'm just wondering, looking at the information in the package report, were there no qualified bids from local contractors? Subvented?
All right, I'm sure someone else can feel that, but I know my friend actually has a roof like that in her house and there are no local contractors. But can you answer that for me? Who's still here, please? Al?
Yeah, it did go through the proper tender process. So any qualified individuals who were available and qualified could have applied for that process. And again, as far as local tenders, local businesses that applied, again, they had the same opportunities. They met the criteria set out by our consultants. So that's about all we can say.
Okay, thank you. And if I may follow up with one question regarding the FCSS programming, I'm wondering for council, what are you looking forward to most for what they have planned coming up this summer?
All right, why don't we answer that? Jean, what would you, what are you looking forward to?
Oh, you want all of council?
Yeah, it's never opinion.
Okay, well, there is one coming August twenty-eighth, but unfortunately I have a business trip. I will not be attending that one. So but there is Arts in the Park, and I like Counselor Bevan's idea, when it gets colder in the year, maybe in late September, mid-September, we could do a pig roast. I would definitely look forward to that.
Counselor Byer, do you have anything that you are waiting with bated breath on?
I would probably say the the one at the end, the COVID, COVID ending party at the end of August. That would probably be mine out of the ones that are on there. Or well, I guess that's not on there though. Yeah, that's probably the one for me. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bevan.
Yeah, I had the pig roast down, but I'd just like to say that Community Service has done an excellent job and I'm sure they will continue to do an excellent job. And they will come back to us with more exciting news and what they plan. So I know everybody has suggestions and that, but I I do rely on Tanya and her her crew back there. They they do a good job. And also just that, anybody listening with the public, you know, please, you know, get a hold of them. You can get a hold of Tanya or our CEO, Christine Beverage. And if you've got some ideas, let us know because we do not have all the ideas, but we're sure we'll take a look at everything. Thanks.
Thanks, Trevor. That's good ideas. Counselor Curry?
Oh, Adrian, you know me, I'm looking forward to them all. But if I have to pick based on the list of activities they already have planned, and you guys, I like to always go in the sun right when it comes up there. I absolutely loved, loved the Diversity and Inclusion Video Series, so I'm really excited to see the next one. I think those are so beautifully done and just so so fantastic to see. And unfortunately, I had to work this last Saturday and was not able to participate in the mountain biking course. So my fingers are crossed they're coming back in September because based on the videos, a few of the three to five-year-olds have greater skillset than me. They're not three, they're four to five, three-year-olds weren't allowed. But I saw some of the skills coming out of actually the eight-year-olds and I'm like, I need to be in that course. So I'm really hoping to come back in September because I have a mountain bike, I'm just not great at riding it. So that's my greatest. All of them I am excited for, but those two I'm really excited for.
Well, Adrian, I did watch the fireworks that were in Edmonton, Calgary and Red Deer. So that was just on YouTube. So now I'm anxious to see them in Edson when they come because that's inclusive for the whole community. And I think we're just off to a big bang to continue with our success. Because I think through COVID, as a community, we've been very fortunate to have construction workers in town, et cetera. So we just need to continue on with the big bang. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we have somebody else, Steve?
He doesn't have his hand up, but I'd like to introduce him as well. Mark Cappas has joined XM one oh five in White Court. He's a former colleague of mine, so welcome, Mark.
Well, welcome, Mark, and and very nice. Thank you for covering us. I appreciate that. Are you from Boom?
No, he's he's from XM one oh five.
Oh, I'll have to change them channels. Okay, but thanks, Steve. Nice that there's a colleague with you. Thank you very much. Okay, if we have no further questions, then Steve, are you taking us into closed session?
You bet.
Okay, we'll leave.
We we need a motion to go into.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm already leaving. Thank you. Trevor's made a motion to go into closed session. Oh, in advance. Yes, thank you. Did we lose Counselor Bevan, the other session? All right. All right, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Okay, thank you, Counselor Curry. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to you next week, I guess, council meeting. Okay, bye-bye.